I will call the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, uh, work session of the county commission to report on the term of approval.
Mr. Sluter?
Here.
Ms. Hyde?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Yeah.
Mr. Brayden?
Here.
Mr. Brayden?
Here. And as a reference in the audience, I don't need to tell anybody that we don't have to call the commentary here and all of this stuff. So we will go straight into tonight's agenda, the work session topic discussion of the subdivision in the zone in the works. And in the end, it's fairly fresh, September of twenty-twenty-one, this provides the proof that if we made a recommendation not long before that, the dependent two hundred thirty-nine case document, there is the case of loosees when you're going from two different documents to one. So we've got a few things already, we're discovering a few more, but tonight's session will be to cover those areas that Miss Grant has brought to our attention and what are all she wants to do. So, um, what I was supposed to do is go through what Miss Grant said at first, section by section, and I'll say that. Um, and Miss Grant, do you need to sit over there or?
Um, with number five, I'll just let her sit up there with y'all.
With y'all preference, because, uh, again, I can, I'll, I don't want to turn my hair around.
Up to your hair.
My, my, my neck is a terminal issue, that's my issue.
I'll sit here.
Okay. Okay, that's good. Very good.
So the first thing is, um, I made the changes that we talked about, the meeting, for under eighty-six, one thirty-six, we were talking about the, the TCO and building exteriors. Um, so we were talking about adding certain types of material that could be used under they could still come from the planning commission if they wanted to use something in addition to. So I added two pieces of brick, so a party plank, five, unless approved by the planning commission prior to the government approval.
Are there any other sightings that we feel strongly we should allow by, by the ordinance or are we okay with just that?
Yeah, I just like to make the comment, but it's a matter of, um, in our PUD ordinance, we specify that the, uh, exterior design shall be limited to bricks, split face block, grizzly block, tile, concrete tile, gravel, or the simulated EIS, real simulated wood and the glass. Um, and as you well know, we knocked out the gravel and changed what the board said. Um, and so, uh, since that's in the TCO, and here, but the ordinance, I think we have the gravel, make them both consistent. There's always issues where there's, you know, uh, as a, as a design, although.
So the, so the TCO also allows, uh, a few other things, uh?
Yes.
And what they block?
Yeah.
Grizzly block, pile, concrete tile, but we, the government, did they take that out or?
We took that out of the original, uh, TCO. Now, no, I don't recall what it was to order that, but I'm trying to, I think the form stuck up.
Comments, brothers?
I'm really concerned about, um, restricting it too much, um, because, you know, there's been a lot of talk in the county about how to bring businesses into the county, and, um, with the big box stores, I know that they, they have more budgets and money if you're going to be able to do certain things than, uh, small homegrown company would. So I just want to make sure that what we say about these things, that we're trying to keep those, uh, protections. But I would want something like the, um, restrict the money of one, uh, to open, uh, smaller home, but we have housing options, um, because of the restrictions we put. So I have a lot of the way, um, Grant has worried it, uh, that the whole lot is a great challenge, and so it's, it wouldn't be bad for the property.
Right, and we could always add other ones, but are there some we would want to allow in the ordinance as a debate because it looks attractive and it's going to last longer than that? Are there additional ones we just want to add that are in the, uh, in the, uh, but I thought this was the old ones.
Yeah, and actually, the last sentence in there, if you all will look at what that I did, uh, I would recommend the similar, the similar to exteriors in the TCO, be similar to the PUD, such as established, uh, with the statement that other types of materials may, may get the approval of the director.
Right, but, but, right, so, but again, you're, you're, you're closing, not limiting it, but just these, or actually adding additional ones?
Yes, yes, there are the reasonable additions, yeah. And, and I'll say it upfront, y'all will know that, right? And some of the metals, um, that Sherry has pointed out, um, does look good, but have those specific types, because these types of metals are some that are coming into the market, uh, market that you're, that is. To be honest, I always look at metals as being, uh, we got a brick, but up so far, in any question, like, one percent of that is above that. I think we want to be in a position where we make decisions, where we have some, uh, recommendations upfront, but then we can make decisions based on what somebody else might propose. Depending on what it's like, I, I found it difficult to do mine.
But, but why? I don't think you, the person.
Well, no, what, what you're saying, small business is coming in, that's what we want to, but we're, 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 now, I think anybody, if we establish a good car, and the car that looks good, we have good requirements for the car, we, we could look better and a lot more, and still have it, and, uh, you'll see on three sixty, you'll see most, all of the building parts are, uh, so, but if we got a good looking car, then anybody that wants to build there should be able to do that. And at the same time, if you don't have a good car, you're going to turn more people away, and you're going to turn more empty people away. But they, they're not going to want to put this business in the back, uh, something like that, like, sorry.
But, and you're not supposed to strike these laws in your thing, you should allow additional ones, if the thing is correct, and as well.
Yeah, all along, I was saying, it wasn't all like, uh, we just, uh, we spent fifty all the time, like, making sure that the doctor, that he should come up, he has anyone who wants to, uh, buy a vehicle.
Freedom of the footer.
Well, I just like, that's opposite of the way, now, because there doesn't seem any reason why we don't have metal. Metal is a lot better than a lot of the stuff we have out there now. I think we should cut vinyl, vinyl out of this crap, just like that party plank. The metal stuff looks good, it lasts a long time, the stuff we've got out there now that we've made people do, that they didn't have money to do, it's all falling apart, all those damn warnings with that material crap on them, it's coming apart, it's rotten, it's moldy, and that all those buildings look awful, but we allowed that because we like that, it looks wonderful.
Actually, I, that's, that's the reason that the board, in the TCO, and the, I mean, because that was.
Right, that's what we made them do, we made them put those on, at the time, they looked good.
The board, the board, that the TCO, with these, that's why I said, no metal side.
Right, I'm not complaining about the metal side, I'm complaining about what we allow, the material horns that look crappy now, that did last twenty years, the metal is all still good, fine, looks nice there.
So, so Mr. Brayden, are you suggesting, are you suggesting, right, party plank?
No, party plank's good, that's, that's the concrete board, a vinyl siding.
Right, right, right.
Right, I think we should add metal siding, because, right, the metal siding, I think, does look good, that new building, Dixon's new auto place looks really nice, and it's all metal.
Well, that's the TCO, so was that a condition, a permit that they got to allow metal or have? You can, I think it's a little too restrictive, uh, hers, but, uh.
By the way, I'll say, uh, with, uh, the wording that Sherry used, there's a little bit more broad terms, and, uh, because, I, I mean, hardy plank siding is just, uh, it's concrete tile, so, I mean, this, a lot of this stuff that's in here is, um, is kind of included in what, uh, what we have, just a little bit more broad terms, so, I'm fine with, with, with what Sherry has, um, I'd probably be fine with, with the other as well. Certainly, I think that I'm going to want those, yeah, more simple, we can think of the better, but I do like having that additional comment in there, that if there's something that is not explicitly in there, I mean, we might just not be thinking of, uh, of the material that could really look good, and I think it comes with the design, be it metal or whatever, and we take a look, it looks, you know, it looks sharp, okay, yeah, it's fine, uh, like, that, I think that, I think the most important thing for us is to make sure that we have, um, a way for them to, to have approval for something that still looks good, but it's not specified in the, in the ordinance.
So do you want to leave it as Miss Grant has it, or do you want to specifically allow some additional ones, again, which is only, I'm not, in question, which is saying that the split face block, split block, or like party plank siding, or is there value in adding those?
Yeah, see, I don't know enough about those other ones to know whether or not they, that this would exclude any.
I've seen some of the split face block, I don't know about the grizzly block.
Well, and again, those metals, they can always apply for important issues, so we want to stay with Miss Grant's siding, siding. Just that wording has written.
Yeah, I, I think the original intent was kind of to have something that could be streamlined, you know, through and not have, so, um, I think it's going on out there, probably.
Y'all okay with that then? All right, Miss Grant, next.
Okay, so the next one is, um, agricultural uses, section eighty-six dash one twenty-one, which is on page twenty-six. So I've added eighty-six dash one twenty-one, uh, we just had agricultural incentives, and it didn't really, uh, in our old ordinance, we did want to add, uh, stable, but it got , we do, we put it back there along with other quarters. I did run, uh, the section by animal control, and they saw it was good, it's a, the size of the lot and so forth, so I'll leave it out, and we didn't have too many changes from our last meeting on this, um, so I've got private stables and other facilities is for , if the horses are live stock, shall be at least one hundred feet from all property lines, and at least three hundred feet from any vacant property under the dress. Private stables or other facilities used to be horses or livestock must be located on a lot and in the agricultural or rural residential senior district that is at least five acres wide. On a five acre lot in the agricultural or rural residential senior district, there may be up to a total of two of any of the following animals, horses, cows, cows, or a total of five of the, any of the following animals, sheep, goats, lions, walrus, or alpaca. For every acre addition to the first five acres, there may be a total of one additional horse, cows, or a total of three sheep, goats, lions, walrus, or alpaca. This limitation does not apply to lots ten acres or larger than the agricultural population senior district. Culture including cows, ducks, and other birds, kept for the production of eggs or domestic consumption, specifically excluding roosters, weeds, any cows, turkeys, and peat cows, may be permitted in the R one suburban residential center on parcels less than five acres wide, provided there are no more than ten birds from parcels as a by right use. However, the birds must be seven feet and shall not be permitted to free range. And where we can have more than ten birds, and or any roosters, be any cow, turkeys, and peat cow, a conditional use permit shall be required. Any two cows of the birds must be located eight meters or more than one hundred feet from the vacant property line and at least a hundred feet from any vacant property under residence. No two or more cows of the birds shall be located in the tract of earth.
Comments?
I'm good. Like, I'm, it's all a problem, if you have, some people complain about the, the roosters, because they're saying, I don't know if you allow roosters, but then I thought maybe there's, they're the ones that think all the norms.
They're not, they're not, they have, not in, as we've been, in that area, long line.
Right, I, I, that would help, yeah, that would help, they've had a lot of trouble about it.
And, and again, you know, they do make a lot of noise.
They make noise too, okay.
Uh, we, so, very noisy as well, so.
People, you know, the, the, okay.
I mean, I told the story of the house, my dentist office, dent, and, and waited for my wife, I'm sad as you today, and I heard the rooster off, this, oh, isn't that cool? About ten minutes later, I heard, you know, isn't that cool? And then, I was there for about an hour and a half, and it's like, oh my God, what they were saying.
Fifty all day long, every night.
Um, the only, the only question I have is the, is email, if not, I'd like to go. Only concern that I've got is, so we talk about the, the bird, the coops, that'd be a hundred feet from the adjacent property lines, a hundred feet from the adjacent property owns residence, are there any limitations now, plus all the other things?
The tenant's law?
Well, where I'm giving my callings, my gals, and my goats, sheep, and goats, and walrus, now, have to, uh, in the farm, be, uh, a hundred feet from, from, from the property line, if, if.
The private stables and other facilities, these will be different from the livestock next year, at least one hundred feet from all property lines, and at least three hundred feet from the vacant property.
If you've got five acres or ten acres, why do you want to have a hundred feet from the property line? Is that, is that farming, like, is that the question I have?
It's the thing, like we had with the dog, it gets to, you get on feet once, uh, not like, I don't think, no. How is that, so, how is that?
Right, and, and again, I'm not torn on the question, I'm just raising the question, and, and I don't think any of these are as noisy as dogs or roosters. I just throw that, because, yeah, I'm, I'm, y'all, are y'all okay with this section that's written on? That's too nice, I'm looking for.
Yeah, I feel, I'm gonna do, could be more, but, everybody's taking that, like, sounds that you can't hit that much.
With bowling alley lots, you can't, but which again, is the problem, I have the bowling alley lot, because, uh, which is why I like to.
You're rid of the bowling alley lot.
Yeah. If you left those, the bowling alley lot. All right, very good, so, so we're okay with eighty-six dash one twenty-one dash point one, right? Excellent. All righty.
And the next one is under subdivision, section eighty-six four thirty-eight, which is on page, what have you, four, um, we did make a change, every lot is, like, this is a primary, secondary highway, uh, type of, uh, I know, I know the new ordinance, in the lot, minor residential, farmstead, uh, access, been raised, primary or secondary highway, which will, will, will be fixed, they did not pre-visit. Um, any further subdivision, uh, well, and we've taken it out for excess subdivisions, which are forty-five acres, so if we're going to allow all the other subdivisions access of private or secondary, or we should allow the forty-five acres that are just for.
Comments?
Or you know, yeah?
So, there's nothing, next one?
So, um, under number two, um, this is all the, so, the division, any further subdivision that was previously accepted law, pursuant to this extension shall constitute any of the subdivision, um, of, once we see if you wanted to add, except for family divisions, it shall be subject to all applicable government orders, we don't allow, once it's done, it's an exception, uh, parcel, we don't allow it to be subdivided again. Does that, does y'all want to do make an exception on the family?
Didn't put it in there, we don't want to be able to do it once, or maybe something.
Or, or, or.
I like to put it in, because we did seem to have a lot of those come to us last year before.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people in the, in the really rural outreaches of the, of the county that are financially poor, but land rich, so to speak, that they're only, that's their, kind of their only way of being able to, to provide, provide some of the families, this lot, that, or this exception, probably help them out.
And, and I know we have the express, um, that, so maybe, I want her, for a family that wants to build a house, and they have finance, the money has to be, what, to end up financing, so this is a way, like, this is what I'm thinking, it's kind of a follow that, find a, for you, and we'll, like.
Yeah, I like having that, right?
I guess, yes, it's, it's a lot of weird. Well, I think America's got talent.
I got talent, I got the golden buzzer.
Sorry, I'm glad you, I'm glad you tonight.
Yeah, I never hear about. Maybe we should work with.
All right, um, Miss, uh, Miss, uh, Graham, so eighty-six, four fifty-six, tough, tough decision.
Okay, so, um, that is on page two oh two, um, and there was an issue with the number of lots, that, also subdivision is allowed one lot per five acres, and, and section A, also, did that, no, do you want to put that in there or take it out? We have under section B, we've got the lot areas, lot, so have you read on the lot size of fifteen thousand square feet, a lot certified by both water and sewer, twenty thousand square feet if lot is certified public water or public sewer only, and we also had thirty thousand, we've changed to forty thousand square feet, if the lot is not certified either public water or public sewer. We, there's this, the last one, is still that forty seventy rule, and Mr. Wagner has seen comments on it as well.
I should do this, but what is it, what is this for, for the jump maker?
Forty-three thousand five hundred sixty.
All right, Miss Grant, like, the first or last, I had for me, first, but.
Okay, you want to do the whole or all the first? Okay, first place, the number of lots in the cluster subdivision are allowed one lot per five acres, I don't see any conflict between that and the minimum lot size. And if you look at a, at minimum size subdivision, minimum size cluster subdivision, just twenty acres, you've got four acres of that, uh, except the housing, if you, if you go through the math and divide that four acres, about fifteen thousand square feet, you can't come up with seven point six houses on that four acres. Um, if you go by the, uh, number of lots that allow one lot for five acres, you're going to got four houses. And if, if you move that up to a hundred acres, you've got twenty acres, one, I mean, twenty lots, one value, uh, one lot per five acres, go to the, um, not, lots size, fifteen thousand square feet, you can come up with, uh, thirty-five lots. What we go to, two hundred, what, two hundred acre subdivision, like we got on Denver Road, we can up to, uh, forty-eight lots, which is one lot per five acres, or seven lots, is up to, minimum size subdivision, and, and, and I think there's too much, uh, leeway for the, for, for that, I think, I, I recommend this, one lot per five acres.
I, I normally, let, through y'all's next, that's a quick question, too, that will help educate me, so, if we have a cluster subdivision in a agricultural area, um, there's , who's looking at one lot for five acres, what if we have a cluster subdivision area that has the highest zone, with buildings, one, the lot they, they, in the high density area, cluster, and, and the other quick question I have for you, the, the, uh, the way they calculate it, uh, they do not have to calculate, so they, so I, let, let that, that, uh, twenty acres, and, and, and eight or ten, well, there's, there's a certain amount of them fallen land, they can't go any, right, should we take that into calculation?
Oh, they can use it as part of their, of their calculation, of, of, that is, if you, uh.
If, if, should we have that a lot beyond, or is it okay, did you, this year, recommendations do not worry about, expect they, if we more houses than by taking off one, since they're on him, uh?
I didn't check around with the, uh, um, these, that, um, I think, I, I, I think I appreciate you letting go ahead, so, this one, yeah, anybody?
Mr. Brayden, I'm sorry, I, I can't hear Sherry down at the end of the table, can, or, or Miss Height, when she speaks?
Can you hear us now?
Much better, thank you.
I was just wondering, uh, a second, it's certain area, it's different, maybe, differentiate? What you say, or? Well, no, I, I, again, if no one else is doing it, I'm not, but from the standpoint, I have thought the cluster, the, the number of lots is based on the, on the, the zone below.
Well, it's definitely, so, the ground was developed, only for seventy-five, seventy-eight interpretation, but the number of lots would be based on whether it's sewer, or availability, or sewer or water, or, so, the stuff, it's.
But if you're in a high, if you're in an area that's on the high density, you're only, so why, it was, I guess it was never built as a cluster subdivision in a high density.
Well, a high density is still usually fifteen thousand, so it would fall into the amount of things.
That's, they would just be a major, uh, cluster, so, I think, I see that.
It would help, you know, people in, our, 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 they'd be, because, you know, they could be the twenty or the forty, um, but in R one, it's going to be fifteen regardless.
Comments? Do other counties have that, or don't have that?
Some do, some don't. And some actually have larger lots, like, for.
The, 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 you were saying then, that the other provisions allow more than five acres, or?
This, this allows, uh, almost twice as much as a lot, that, that's it.
There's only one reason, then, I'm, I'm only, but I had a question for sure, and
that is, what, what, what do you see as a conflict between the one lot per five acres and the fifteen thousand square, square, minimum?
It has some parts that has some problems, and, but what we're seeing with a lot of people that are, have proposed, um, is, it does allow for, if you took that out, it does allow for more lots to be created. And most of the cluster developments that people are coming in and, and inquiring about or wanting to do are on substandard sized roads, so we put all that many more cars on the road, it's not, it's not good.
That's not.
Yeah.
That's what I came up with, but, I, now that, oh.
How much, how much area do we really have that's supplied by public utilities, that would, it would even a lot, you know, to, I mean, that's, like, I mean, we might be in a situation where that forty thousand square foot is where most of the opportunity would be anyhow, um, but it just wouldn't require them to, 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 to.
Most different public facilities are going to be out near Central Lodge area.
No, they, they could put in their own water sources.
They could, they could, so, yeah, most people would not be able to put any public, they would have to do that, or that, or field, type of stuff.
Yeah, when I was, when we lived in Marl Hill, we were on a community well, but we had our own separate field, and, and honestly, we had two and a half acres, and, I mean, there was only a little bit of area that we could have a separate field on, and it's, uh, about forty, I don't know if thinking forty thousand, but it might be a small circle.
It is, especially for the, I think, the wells, it was a separate part of the separation.
This would be larger?
That's almost what I was thinking.
I would recommend.
I mean, we want to really, the density of, of our housing should be problematic for, you know, the, the, discussing the, the system, that, I always say, I'm, I'm, capacity, I always shoot pictures, for people, so. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking this should double, before, before, I think.
I mean, we get, get our, we have, and, uh, subdivision, or a lot of subdivisions are built with, with water, without, without, without public water, that, that, that's, 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 that's. Well, I'm a lot, and, we do have a lot of lots of vision, and, and, that's, 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 eleven. Actually, those stuff, they're, I'm, I'm, fifteen thousand square foot lot. One of the reasons that she got, uh, fifteen thousand square foot lot is, you could have a hundred foot garage and a hundred fifty foot deck. And with, with setbacks, thirty foot front setback, ten foot backyard setback, fifteen foot backyard setback, you would still have, um, eight thousand square foot, eight, eight thousand square foot of courtyard and house, which is, for that type of subdivision, it's creative. Uh, it's not like what we would definitely do on, uh, the one, man, the one cluster subdivision that we're working on now. Now, those, those lots have gotten down to almost nothing, because, because that ordinance said there wouldn't be no minimum lot size. So the developer can't handle, and would propose to definitely do that, and sort of, so. We haven't, that's not, that's not.
No, I don't think it really creates, uh, desirable residential areas, uh, you know, I think it's, it's, it's two things, it's, we talked about, aesthetic is not going to look good, especially, like, right here behind the line, um, it's pretty dense, uh, that new section, uh, we'll fill it, then do that, I went through a couple months ago, and it looked like it was kind of like.
Central house.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it, it's just, it's very, everything looks exactly, each house looks exactly the same, um, gravel driveways, they're not paved, or anything like that, and it's just, the, the, the curb appeal is not.
Welcome to urban view.
Yeah, yeah, um, but, yeah, that's where, that's why I have a guess.
We have two issues, the lot size and then the, uh, the square feet, square foot, it, what, what, what it grows from.
Can I ask one more question? Sherry, how many cluster subdivisions do we already have?
We have ninety-five, and how much, how much do we have right now? We have one, um, we have one area that on, off of venture, uh, that particular person actually had a major subdivision approved, all something like that, and he's come back to do a cluster improvement. Um, we did have somebody else come in to do a cluster, uh, that he approved, uh, what, he actually put to a major, but yes, I'm starting to wonder, so I don't know if that's something that he'd even want to consider. Um, and then we have had several people inquire about it, but one is actually probably the one that we started.
And so your recommendation, uh, Lauren, I, I take it to your recommendation as going with the, and is that somewhat, uh, based off of some of the, requests that you had, or inquiries you had come in?
Well, what I hear mostly is, this is one, uh, a lot of people don't want to go that route because they have to spend it to be out standard roads. But a lot of people also are not doing any, you know, a hundred plus, they're doing smaller, whether they're coming in to inquire about it, so I think for the cost effective for those people, they have to probably have a hundred plus papers in order to do so.
The vendor wrote one that called, he cleared five for next subdivision, two hundred thousand, in the cost of this one, so it could be, or do they call?
That may change a little bit, he's now coming back and wanting to do an exception, so.
And, and a few years back, when the cluster first required, we had to share numbers of sections for it to come on board, uh, I had, had a few other folks ask, we had, but, but just, I think it's like, it's, that's not to be that serious, so, uh, we, we have the luxury of not having the issue actually in place, that we could be given, he said, it makes it, it's good, it should be. And that makes it, or fine, we, we're, so, with y'all's pleasure.
I prefer to say one lot per five acres, because that, that keeps the, the number of houses down, it still, still provides the, um, same value that the land is, the, um.
Right, right, good, right.
I, I just think that time goes on with the lot, with smaller lot size, a lot more lots, and the more areas, there's too much weight that's, that, that.
What do y'all think? I'm trying to do some, five or six. And then, so, that's, 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 right, I don't know what they can do, it depends, uh, I could, I, I don't see why, except, you, you want to, they want it, I'd say that much of that, twenty-eight or one.
So if we, if we left the one lot for five acres, how would that, if, uh, if we, if that were to be applied for the ones on the road, would, would that, how would that change that?
Well, the body committed, the actions committed before the new one.
Right, I'm just saying hypothetically, what would he have to do different if, if that was already a place for you?
It would reduce probably, it would, I don't know what the, what, what, I think, yeah, it would reduce a part of that.
Yeah, I'm inclined with the order to stick with the one lot for five acres. Other than for anybody that's listening to this, I know there's been a lot of concerns about trying to, the concern with affordable housing, and I just want to point out that we're just talking about cluster stuff. That there are many other places that, that doesn't apply. Speaking of affordable housing, we all want to do something to give somebody some assistance if they are having this, I don't think it is a lot of questions. But for any of the subdivisions that they're going to have somebody a lot dedicated for affordable housing, which is eighty percent of the median in Concord County. And if it's something that y'all have some questions for, we do have somebody with Habitat that's coming to speak with us and go over all that you all know now.
Just have a question.
Yeah, working on it. They've been in with all of the developers about doing the clusters. And that was one thing, we were going to give them three, three lots, two re-lots for affordable housing.
What's the capacity, is it not, is the apartment cost for two lots? Are those, are they the four, like affordable housing?
They're not sectioned or anything, but I think some of them are in some ways. Then we have another set, because those are fifty-five and above.
What, and what's the capacity of the rooms that are considering some things?
Oh, they're four, well, not really, they're only, only a hundred.
It wasn't that cheap either, but people were getting them, uh, affordable, affordable, that, that, that.
It was a lottery, but I'm sure they were a creature, um, and that were excellent. So they could do the whole state, that's a nice though, more than they could much pay for.
And talking with Habitat, the houses that they build, they are portioned. If they, they, they finance it themselves, it's very low in some ways, so they have to earn it for fifteen years, for more than the house, if they do sell it within a fifteen year period. They have people that knock it down, and then have a plan of course against whatever that person is doing, what I can do, or whatever, or whatnot there. I'd be welcome to have some comments, or just kind of like, we generally want it.
And now that, now that they raised this issue, and we're speaking to the county, and people started to ask for affordable housing, or we're chasing the, or the, or. But you can, and this is, that's a great, they want. In the meantime, however, five acres and forty or eighty, that hopefully will come to be off. What's the, what's the, uh, which means one, it's up to three dollars, it's for a dollar. But so the agenda is to not impact affordable housing, other than for a lot of different ones, in that sense.
We're saying that if we leave that in, there won't be any requirement to have either public law or public. They were correct.
Right, now we have that, taking in the lot part of it, forty thousand, that it still one lot for five acres. And is that something that y'all mentioned in the case in that day?
It certainly forty, some, but not, not maybe eighty, fifty, or more. Where did you come up with that?
Boy, it had to be.
Oh, oh, and then the two, the, I was, sorry. Still, uh, make a lot, but within that five acres, each spot.
Yes, within that five acres, where the fifteen thousand square foot was, they can, but they, if we have the one, one per five acres, then your lot doesn't fit five acres, so.
You're gonna have an affordable.
To not have any problem with.
The thing enough, and just, I think, I think a whole lot of problems with the age, that, that, should be, uh, maybe with some of those.
Talking with some of the others, and not too many, not very many of our area, but some of them, the lot part of the law is.
My biggest concern is that if we're gonna be, if we're, if we're just making sure that there's a requirement that if the more dense it is, the more affordable it is, that there's a requirement to be.
Like, uh, saying forty-three thousand square feet is a whole acre, so if you get forty thousand, almost a whole acre. You're used to that now, but today, that's two acres.
But if you go with one lot for five acres, you got a twenty acres subdivision, you got four lots, um, if it's the.
Then we can do a very simple ladder that's greater than sixty thousand per foot. Okay, they only, here and that, that's lower than that. And it seems like looking at this, if you go with the, the one lot for five acres, we don't really need these then, correct?
Well, you could still maybe even, um, go with the lander, as it goes. You figure out the area by one lot for five acres, and then the lot would be just eight thousand.
Okay, that's interesting.
You can always have that number.
Okay, that's interesting.
Not what it was, the lander requires one five, or what's that into the, one, of the, ending, is the way it's written for that. And they require eighty, if it's one person, or if they, that, that, that.
That what you're saying, ever you said?
And, and I just ended with a lot, in your, your job.
Well, it can drop up steadily, but I feel like there are several examples up steadily, um, you get up in that three oh one area, where they had recent development, but nothing is super dense. And all of it looks very, very, so. But then they've got others that, it's, um, it's a huge, it's a huge farm with the, you know, with the meandering, you draw it back and down, and, and five, they got lots and, and looks good.
So, what's the pleasure, is we're gonna leave the, the one lot for five acres, then, uh, to ten, to five, or about to four acres. And then, uh, probably not find it, fifty thousand, thirty. If the one, if the one, if the, if the, if the four thousand, five, eighty thousand, or fifty thousand, or a couple of them. So we're good with eighty-six dash, what is it?
I'll try to cut the comments, if you understand this, but, um, and you, to, 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 uh, here, that says, uh, was permitted in the same, uh, proposal, within the cluster subdivision, and easement. Standards from the driveway and maintenance, it's not, it's, 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 that sounded a lot of creepy. Do we want to have shared, uh, easements, in other words, what that would be, is the, had an easement through a line of houses, one back to another line of houses, back to back, or another couple lots, back and back. Do we want that in a, in a cluster subdivision, I think we basically, I believe that is next subdivision.
Uh, we're seeing this, by the way, for. So seeing the comments yet, I'll, and, um, so the cluster subdivision, one of the advantages to the builder is he or she can have his road, comes in, clusters of all, one place, and, and, especially, I don't know, say, the first country, and, and we, we're going to, yeah, we're going to, suppose, that, 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 example. If we already have broken roads, and that, plus, we're going to have, we, we, and, and pointing fingers, and the issues that arise from additional, is that given the, so, that, 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 I like, uh, imply, that if you set that. Let's just not watch.
And the purpose of it in first place was to say that. And either way, it's temporary, it's like changing the. What's the status to take it in fact. So I'm asking, if we, if, you know, if we, uh, would allow this, because for me, um, the river was front yard, back to back, and so these, the five or six.
We have six, um, and five have been closed, uh, and this is just this year, where everyone was.
But, but how many of those rooms, river was at the front of the house, actually, they just. Is that all five of them?
No, um, all of two.
Oh, and one six.
I can remember one, I don't remember three, another one.
And so the other, oh, and you know, it's not expensive, it is one one. All of them, so they were, were they was closed, this is really bad.
No, all but one had large parts of the property, they were off the road, um, so it didn't affect the neighbors. Um, some of them are where we are, it's down on the, one did, one was on the water. So it didn't really, um.
So, so we actually had one down in the second district, and it was planted in front of the house. So if I drove back there, you'd see, if I drove onto it, spot out, see, oh, this is one of the house. But driving down the road, didn't know, fell as, as they, closer end, the, the property dropped off to here. So, yeah, I would have been fine with what he did, but I, I would not necessarily find with somebody who has this big gargantuan thing up front, and, and does this take care of that, are, are these efficient, the backs, and what are comfortable with that difference?
I am, and most of them, I think, in Chamin, if you remember any of them, most of them were in an area that were, they had trees all around, so nobody could really see it, with the exception of the last one. Is that right?
That's.
Our variances for the garages.
That's correct, most of them were, they had barriers of the trees, and most of them, as you said, they were on the river, but the ordinance, um, does indicate what is considered the front yard.
Right.
Mr. Braden, so unfortunately, um, it, it says something in the ordinance about how it butts a street, where it clarifies what, what's considered the front.
And I remember another one, the second district inspection, accessory drawing from long path, who were looking in for the government. So, and it was a look at it in front of the house because of, of the drop off, but it was not something that anybody, just to be, to those, including the owners, or they were looking for that. So, so are y'all okay with the wording in the section? Okay.
No, because if, you know, if someone has something outside of these boundaries, then you still be able to do a live one exception.
Right.
So it's not, you know, totally discouraging, somebody will come and ask for that.
But it saves the time, the money, and the hassle, it goes, and the neighbors will not be under the impact. Perfect, okay, great. All right, um, and the next item I guess is accessory drawing.
Yep, eighty-six, one fifty-four, accessory dwelling unit, and this is on page one oh seven. Um, number three, um, an accessory dwelling that is detached shall be no more than eight hundred gross square feet. Um, and I just added, unless the conditional use of it has to occur.
And I thought that was in what we agreed to, I'm not sure how that got dropped out.
It got dropped out, or this gives them the option.
Correct.
To, if they want to keep it eight hundred or below, they don't have to come for the CUP, but if they need to build a larger one, because it's, well, you know, family's three or four, then they do have the option to pop up CUP.
Are y'all okay with that? Should love that, if you and Mr. Ryan, for your first time, just nine hundred and twenty-three, you got started, eight hundred, but he is a part of a lot.
Not really, I mean, nine hundred people.
This day, it is, I mean, if I wanted to build a piece of, a, a house of that.
Even, even having a four thousand.
Oh, yeah, I hope that's not forty pounds.
Well, affordable, yeah, I have, affordable housing is usually fourteen hundred square feet.
Yeah. Uh, so I'm saying, I, I didn't know, maybe we could put something in there proportional to the size of the main dwelling, I don't know. If I have a four thousand square foot house, I can only build eight hundred square feet accessory dwelling, that's, it's gonna look like a shed compared to the house.
Yeah, but the purpose of the accessory dwelling, typically, is to work on the structure, and that, just to get it out, you got to open the doors, and have that, and just, um, offer the whole. We have it for, um, a, a parent to come and live close to the children, but we also have, um, a child and their family coming to, live close to the parents, which normally when they come, they come with a couple of kids, so someone, obviously, we've done a thing that we stated earlier, that if you have more than one dwelling on property, it makes it very hard for banks to find them. So I don't know that we want to raise it, that encourages, that encourages court people to try to put that second house on the property, unless it's in a situation where they're trying to take care of the man, and, um, um, so I do see it as being small, but again, I don't think that we want to open it up, that it's, you know, people will be ready to try to do that, um, because again, and once I'm wrong, um, as far as I have, I've done, and I could be, that if someone wants to try to sell that property, it would be, it's a, a cost, it's a seller, it's a two dollar.
And like, they would come to us, and they have to split it up into two parcels, now we're, now we've got two houses on five acres, and your friend only have one house on five acres, that's got two full five houses. So.
They can also come in and that's, and this is.
Right.
Exactly, but again, keeping it smaller, it's eight hundred, it still provides that ability, well, not everything they have to come out of the condition, even from it, when it, it needs a, it still allows those, uh, but still, still that it hurts other, that we look at.
But we, we, we didn't need to allow it at all, and a lot of people were coming in, and it was adding next to birds to them, and it was unnecessary, and so he said, even if it's small enough, there, if you really want to, to the parents, you're not looking to rent it back to another family, blah, blah, blah. So again, if you need more than eight hundred square feet here, it's not going to be a circumstance, I'm coming here with my wife and two kids, to watch out for the parents, and right now, they want to stay in their house. Yeah, and if we're gonna make the switch to two years, we're not ready to do it now, and so they need a little more room, that's to be allowed in. Y'all okay with that? And the other one, where it was, it was, this detached, attached one, if that's a situation, it could be a presentant, but I'm not gonna.
Right, exactly.
We left that.
Right.
I've got a question, it won't fit that, or, or, is that, is that, will we, is it in the zone, or is that a lot more, or, or, that's just, may, probably what makes these better? Something to that as well, or?
Yeah, that is something you might want to address, because if the AC, you set back, it's gotta be seventy-five feet. Um, you just put a minimum setback of forty-five or greater, then your R one, you set back, I think it's forty-five. Um, so it could be a lot closer. Most of those are convinced that it's not gonna have the line to do it anyway, um.
I'm just thinking, so I, I want to put, it's something, it's, it's, father or children else, or if that's really the point, that, that.
And that's pretty much what this came from, because they were having a lot of people come in to do this, um, then they have a lot of property, and we really didn't see it. With the exception of two, and one was on the water, um, and one, uh, that started construction, was outdated from it, and it was only eighteen point seven foot from the property line. So that was unsafe, and they could, I think, that's easily locating.
So are there changes you want to make in addition, or you just, you must.
I don't know anything specific, that, that we need to change, um.
We can add. That's true, that, that's gonna cut out pretty much everything in R one, but it will allow for RR, which is a minimum lot size, and RR is three acres. Um, but they could have more, um, and.
It's really, it's a problem of people want to construct something, or a lot of people trying to construct.
It does come up quite a bit.
In a garage, but having a building directly in front of the house, or, or.
Most of them are off to the side.
Right, um, I mean, obviously, what, you would look at, of course, I was, I thought, how, not that long ago, it had a shed. I mean, you walk off to the front porch, you know, walking in the back of the shed, it's right there, and, you know.
Keep it on the ground.
So, but, but that, obviously, but, I, I wouldn't have anything that, certainly the first thing in front of the house, but. Yeah, if they, if they have total cell in the down the road, because, yeah, because they got a heavy building, yeah, that's, that's there, it's, uh, but it's, you're not gonna, if, if. Well, we need to be, but so, could, could shut it here.
As far as taking them out directly in front of the dwelling?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say, but I think on, from the, well, the, the, if, if it's not directly in front of the house, it's going to, so that the body, I think, we should allow it.
So we're, we're gonna leave it with the, not being, and I'm, I'm gonna score this a little bit, uh, not being located directly in front of, but to the side, and the front yard, but to the side of the block.
Yeah, everybody else is okay, that, that, I feel like, actually, plenty of the same, from that, it works, but it might be wrong place, a lot of people can deal with that as well.
And where, where would that go in, in, in that section of the, of the ordinance?
Uh, it's under the modifications.
Right, right, but that is after the first sentence, uh, after the last.
And I'm thinking we should go underneath the table, oh, you mean this, whether we're adding?
Yes.
Oh, um.
Because it says an accessory building may be constructed in the front yard, or a lot of private, or more, you're suggesting allowing, you know, smaller lots, I was. A house mall, and, and so, so you're saying, um, in the front yard, or? So in a lot that's five acres or more, uh, provided requirements, except, so what, what exactly, suppose you again, just like you're trying to.
We would do allow it in the front door, if they got in front of the house.
But you want it for smaller lots, I think?
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, I think a five acre is, is, is really not space right there.
The problem that you don't want to have, though, is, say, you have in the R one, where it's condensed housing, the one house maybe setback a little bit more, that gives them more to put this house and thirty-five up to the front line, but that would also put it in the front yard of everybody by the side of, that's really close, um, whereas you have the larger parcels, the neighbors really aren't gonna see it too much, so it's really not gonna affect the neighbors, but when you get into these smaller lots, the neighbors are gonna look out their front door and see a garage, and you don't want that. With a, mine, very much.
And if I can add to that, all of the one, pretty much, I think, except for one of the variances that went before the BCA, they were all in the AC district, and they all were at least five acres, except for one case.
Great, are we to kennels?
Kennels, so eighty-six, catch two forty-five, kennel private, and this is on page one twenty-four, um, and I did talk with the animal control on this one as well, um, provide setback of at least one hundred feet from the property line. Um, number two, provide a setback of at least, and we changed that to three hundred feet from any residents not associated with the parcel. I think it was two hundred, we put it at three, just like we did with the staples and the quarter tens and so forth. Um, and then number three did that change, provide screening that is approved by the standing administrator that visually blocks the front and close to the side property line. And I did twa, uh, talk with them about limiting the number of dogs from a kennel, and she said, that she doesn't know anybody that has done that locally around us, and she said it would be hard to get four, she said, because hunt dogs come, they go, you know, they have puppies, they lose a dog, they get a couple more, she said, it would be really hard to force. How many dogs you have, four or five?
How far is the, uh, the, the children from the front door of, of the corridor, of, of the end of the building? The range would be hurt for more, more, uh, sometimes come out here, come somewhere to bring the floor, there's, there's a lot of them there. But, but it's three hundred feet enough. From, from, from my house. From your house, your house.
I think it just depends, I mean, you could probably have a, a right to things from you, and you're still gonna hear them at times.
And, and I'm, and I'm not suggesting a mile away, but I want to get three hundred feet in that one.
No. And I'll be honest with you, not everybody lives in those, completely posed, the heavy, the neighbor that has, I, I have a neighbor that has a house, and honestly, the only time I hear the dog ever carry on is when the neighbor would come right into the yard past the house, and so the dogs get all excited, it could be their go time, or if I hear them in the middle of the night, it's because there's something going on, and honestly, that's like a warning for me, and so I, I like having it, so, you know, I do understand that when it's less feet than that, as we had, you know, a couple of people come in and complain, that that really is a problem, but again, I don't think that we want to try to completely discourage you in a rural area having kennels, um, I think we want to try to be respectful, but I also am concerned as far as, um, trying to, um, enforce something as well, so if you make it so restrictive, um, it's, it's, it's gonna lead to more people, um, having issues, and, and I don't know that we have the personnel to be able to enforce something like that.
But this, this will be more matter, where you play the kennel, that's close to day to day parking, my neighbor across the street had their dogs up front, and we wouldn't have minded, it was only people walk up and down the road, or it was only when, when their deer in the area, they parked nonstop, all day, every day, you could hear it inside the house, it's moving on, commercials where they put them in the back, and, and also every time somebody came by to deliver something, they couldn't deliver it, which is, I think, part of why they built the fence and put it in the backyard, now it's not a problem anymore. I just raised the subject, three hundred feet is a whole, I bet it's a two hundred feet, and, and again, wait for the rest of it, so I'm okay with that, I just want to throw that on the table, and it sounds like y'all are okay with three hundred feet, and so am I.
So, under our table was permitted uses, permitted by Ryan, in the AC and the RR, they can only have them in the R one with a D C.
Okay.
So if it looks, if they come before your, or request an issue.
Very good.
Then it's, uh, come out of the kennel.
Uh.
Does anything apply to that?
That's probably gonna be a little bit different, um.
It should be at least as far or farther.
Yeah, and they, they all have a CUP requirement, except for the industrial.
And, 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 and one, one folks who quote recently had talked about the neighbor had his kennel closer to her house than his own house, and, and this will hopefully take care of that, so again, I just want to throw it out for everybody's consideration, I'm okay with three hundred feet, and the gift down the road, that is a problem, we can talk about it again. All right, and that was all we had, we, with that correction, Grant, we have some additional things that you want to bring up, or for me to do that, uh, how do we want to proceed, now, with them, I think Mr. Ryan can have something, I have something, how do y'all want to proceed with, with anything additional that Grant has, or, or get into the table?
Um, I want you to start with that, um, I did, uh, add the pictures, we did a ride trip, uh, the other week, and we took the pictures of some neighboring, uh, landscaping. And I also, um, put the requirement of some of the adjacent, um, localities, um, the landscaping requirements, that's why, that's, um, we went up three sixty-one.
So.
I believe, uh, if you look at, you know, what you put in here, the, the landscaping requirements, and then other than, oh, there's sort of, I guess, that, that, that. I think what we looked at down, down near the kennel, is, most of that was for commercial. When the ride was just down, it was, it was produced because you got a lot of landscaping, lots of history, but when you look at individual lots, some of ours are, are landscaped, it all, it's, it's, but. And what I've handed out, I gave you all, I've taken the requirements that we have, which. Yeah, I've changed those requirements from fifty foot, five foot, to a hundred foot, five foot, and the thirty foot, five foot, but it was slow, it was under protocol. Now, telling you to the day what it would look like, what our landscape plan would look like, what I'd like to, and my, this part. And then I've shown the recommended, um, landscape plan, which is a little, is it in you have, but I would like to make something a little more than what, what we have, I found, or, or that I've shown, maybe a little too busy. I just like to.
If I can interrupt you for one second, so you're referring to eighty-six, one thirty-six, five, one eight?
Yeah.
I can do that again, here's the correct page. So, so what additional changes are you recommending?
I'm recommending, basically, I'm recommending this.
Which is the wording now, uh, do we, we don't, we don't have drawings in the ordinance, we could, but.
I think, yeah. I think, yeah, that's, 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 the whole of that, that's, that's, um, I would like to finish on a bit of a front, what we have, what we want. Like I said, this is my favorite, and what I, whether I've shown this respect line, or this question, uh, with that much With that much pretty decent structure in the cluttered area, it doesn't have to be all. Two thirty in August, or two to three thirty in March. I think I know some of your implemented laws were all good. My thing is that if it all is commercial, something. We should have this one that's left. That's the one that's not good. If we if we had try a chapter, then that's. A lot of development. We've got a lot of development that doesn't. Up near the commerce park, how long that was roughly is. That doesn't have any. You have some of the other developments, the food line shopping center.
Have food line that's a lot better than well. I'm I'm support that you're right. Actually, there's two days, but so much around state. Many accidents, you know, you can't see coming around there. People are coming down. You almost got drowned.
That's the fact, the original planning was good.
Right.
Because they're close to. And some some destruction.
Yeah. It does look nice. I like this stuff. They build a summer farm, which every other tree is dead. That's another.
We have to not just put the meat on the way, whatever we do, we have to address the force. Because our world, you know, that's that's just the job.
That's what I like. I mean, that beer coming by, that kind of gas tank. It was all scrubbed out nicely built it and all the. All the trees died or quit their hair. They grew fast and they died. They were all dead. Now there's one left. So now you see the big tank. You put that little flames on the side. So like that, you can't see it, but.
Actually, that's. And I love that. The best. Everything you can get.
Yeah, it is pretty good.
They they hold it up.
Well, and I don't. No, and I don't object to making changes to one thirty six point five. But what what specific wording are you proposing? Twelve is a twenty five feet.
Okay.
Actually, that's a fifty, but what?
Okay, what I propose is landscape plan with fifty dollars. Landscape also shall consist of at least four or more.
Okay.
To say to twelve trucks, each one hundred feet.
Okay.
And then again, we would literally require to provide a landscape plan. This in that, in other words, it doesn't have to look like this as long as that. He's that number.
So there's some specificity I'm pushing for. So what do y'all think about that level of specificity? Has it any comfort with this?
I don't really. Against the business account tree, which comes down to the sure. Who is true or either sure. More or something along that, I think it would be forty feet either on there, you know, pretty.
That's something that should really fit in that like.
Yeah, I mean, I would only be more concerned with that than anything. I think. Well, why don't we sit down to the front door while we sit down the building? If you go in a couple of good styles, you know, citrus trees or stuff like that, so you put down there. That's six feet of that hundred feet that we've got. We can get away with just two and then look real good. You take it off right away and then. That's really, for me, it all comes down to. There goes a lot of modeling that's happened. You have fifty per guy, where it's a hundred twenty feet.
So what's the what's the guidance from this Graham? What do you all think?
Yeah, I think the sample actually looks really good. He has the surprise. Because you can't see in your your vegetation, so you don't have all larger trees. We saw on our our field trip there, once those trees get really big and they're close to any power lines. Then the power company just destroys them and then they're no longer attractive.
You know, first of me, well, this is my ignorant, when we're talking about the P C O four or. Which right now is the full length of the three sixty and the thirty four. Are we just talking landscaping for businesses or commercial right now? Are we talking for anything? It doesn't really specify, but I think we should specify commercial. Because that was part of my question. Because again, it's are you. I live on Route thirty.
You didn't have to do landscaping.
Trust me, I have. My kids, because they they offer you from the noise of Route thirty. Um, but I just, I just wanted. There is nothing that cuts out the noise of that or not from the down rate. But um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify for that as far as whether, you know, what are we requiring for?
So all the other decisions we've made tonight, again, we always have the option to revisit any of those, but it's good to have some out of the way, but that we can say, you know, going forward with this whole ongoing. Do we want to ask the Graham to make opposed changes for our next time travel to Jordan? Do you think there is specific, our guidance now or if it's in our capable handles, would be pleasure?
Well, here's my thought. I would like to see, especially if these are some of the dangers of burns that are coming up more often right now. That we don't hold changes that we want, that we think are legitimate to make so long that it still returns. Or from being able to, you know, try to enforce that. So whereas, you know, I'm not sure that we've discussed everything that we would like to get out of the way, knowing that that still had to go before a public hearing. I just want to make sure that we're realistic in what we put together and not hold off on this for too long before we try to get some of the changes. Put before a public hearing.
Well, what if I do this? After tonight's work session, I'll take everything that we've done, insert it in wording like we love the word that's created. Let y'all take a look at it at our July meeting, our block of meetings. And our business everything, then we will hold a public hearing. Well, actually, I guess we should have a work session with the board supervisors first to make sure that they're committed to what we changed. If we can get on their July market for, then we can maybe do public hearings in August, September, as of late.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, and if there's anything else other than what we've already discussed, that you think that we need to make sure gets included in that as well. Then I'll be, I think it would be recommended to try to get to that, even if we address those separately, which we'll now, when we get to that, we'll. For you to go to Apple.
Um, I would like to see something, so let me work this on for a while. Um, if I can talk with Capitán and see if it's okay to do it at maybe one of the board supervisor's work sessions. Would y'all be okay coming to one of the work sessions? So that way she could do a presentation to both.
Yeah. Sure, I'd be fine with y'all, okay?
So that might be something that we want to.
Actually, I was worried about you.
We've we've got some major holes. We'll fill fairly quickly, but having said that, I think waiting until September to actually have a public hearing. August, September is actually too long, so.
No, I just thought first to check with you. And to say that, you know, that we. I mean, we might have to have these more often than not to try to address the issue.
Oh, it just takes such a long time to get those things from that.
And smaller stuff that comes up, if you want to back in a small work session.
Well, but but again, any change, Jordan, we need to have public hearing, supervisor needs a public hearing as well, so.
A long meeting, a long work session.
Right. Yeah, I mean, this is a two hundred thirty some page document that we don't have. I would have probably had even more than we have had so far. So they're they're important enough to get resolved in the next couple of months.
Just wondering, Mr. Ashcraft, and nothing definite yet, just to make sure it's gonna work. Maybe possibly do a work session in July, see, join with the board supervisors. Um, and if we can get Capitán coming to a presentation, also for how this might.
I would be. I was surprised. Well, I had to stand bro.
And I mean, I can, if it's recorded, I can go back and gather and announce some people.
If you have a presentation, that would be the package that would be the ABS committee.
And more importantly, I would tell them at a time, we'll we'll check and see if that's been being enabled.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Wright? Mr. Slater? Mr. Greenwood? Miss Hight? Got one. Before we get to your event thing. So. I'm I'm not a, Hannover does everything perfect. But but all of y'all should have a single page, or the first page of the light industrial section for Hannover County. It's actually a five or six page document. So so there's been a lot of discussion over many years that we're not gonna have an Amazon distribution center. We're not close to airports. We're not close to to interstate, the whole nine yards. Probably also not gonna have a Facebook, a high computer thing like I can rightly have. Our niche, from what I've been told over a long period of time, is light industry. And we allow light industry as a as a conditional use in B section. But but, you know, if if someone comes to us with a request for light industry, what is what is what are they allowed? What are they not allowed? What are the rules for the road? And and I would like to see a light industry section in the code on the on the on the permitted uses. And and, you know, what what are the conditional uses and what's what's law applied, you know? Again, it'll make Ms. Graham's job in this year, because when someone comes, she'll be able to say, yes, this is fine, no, this is not fine. It makes it easier for developers to look and see that this is something that's broken the light material, but I can see more of it. Or no, go go chop your where it's empty. So I'd like to see something that puts permitted uses. And 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 permitted luxury uses and those sorts of things, height restrictions, things that that again, we can add to the ordinance. And I mentioned, we've been talking about light industry for quite some time. Apparently earlier, this one economic development authority has a resolution on something they want to do. They're talking about expanding industrial and light industrial boundaries in simple garage. We don't have any light industrial boundaries in simple garage. You can put it in a B two district. But but again, what can put B two district? So I would like to see us add a section on light industry. Are y'all with that? So 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 between now and our next go around, if you can't finish, if you can look at what others are doing, what do you think we should do? That would be great. Yes. Yes. And again, we could actually have light industry districts because it's allowed B two. You know, we would establish a district that's dual condition uses, or in fact, we could say, here's some areas that we look like. And again, anything we could make it easier for them while not impacting other votes out of the public meeting. Not a county meeting, but it's a political meeting. And someone was asking after after meeting, could you have a business in in the light industry area? And I said, yes. And I believe I believe they can be compatible because they can actually support each other. But what do we allow and not allow? Well, and 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 on top of that, a light industry could be a buffer between a heavy industry and residential as well. I mean, it can, not only not only can you have, not only can you tell them what buffers we want you to have from your neighbors, but also you can have this a buffer between. Residential or 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 a regular commercial and 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 a high. Have something like a like a.
We could.
Uh, if we allow it to be allowed in the pot. But there's something else we can talk about. I'd be fine with that if, you know, if if we think there's something we should do. Y'all okay with that? Okay, great. Thank you. And then you have something?
I have a couple more things, but I'll be real quick. And our new ordinance, we have a event venue. It means allocation that hosts affairs, including but not limited to banquets, dinner parties, weddings. And the light for the three consecutive days for which attendance is permitted only by invitation or reservation. And so then if you go into our, if you make a event venue, requires a conditional use permit. And the A C R R R one, we want to be two. If you go to special event. And that's on page thirty seven. It means circus, fair, carnival, festivals, weddings, and reunions, or other types of special events. That run for no longer than two weeks are intended to or likely to attract substantial crowds. Or unlike the customary or usual activities generally associated with a property where the special event is activated. But then if you go to the matrix. On the mountain prime, special event somewhere on.
See, when they add the matrix or something else or addition.
We have a visit venue, which is, which we require a C E P no matter where it is. And then we have a special event, which is actually a little bit more than a visit venue. So do we want to put that underneath there and require a C E P as well?
And where's where's special event covered in the ordinance as well?
It's under the definition.
So it's only in the definition?
I'll play that the part.
Oh, interesting.
And if I may, Mr. Breeden, it's actually come up a couple of times very recently with like the firework sales where they're going out and they're have putting up the booths for just a couple of weeks, for like two weeks. And then there used to be a section under the ordinance that was separate, and that's been taken out of the ordinance. So it now only implies under the definition, but there's nothing other than the definition. And that's what Sherry's referencing. And there's nothing other than the definition currently.
But wasn't the old ordinance?
It wasn't under the old ordinance.
Was it? All right, elements. Would you pleasure?
And under a visit venue. You know, it talks about weddings and that type of thing. We do have individuals that not doing a business, but you know, that their child, they want to get married. You know, one time thing. And, you know, we're gonna charge them twenty five hundred dollars for a conditional use permit to have a one time wedding.
But it's not a commercial operation.
It has nothing to say. It's it's an A C R R R one of the conditions for mental parts. I mean, you have and you have your event venues that are currently in place. You know, your your farm and your plantation that have. Their grandfather, they have, yeah, they can go back and forth.
And it's not.
And that that is a commercial. Yeah. So with that, I guess because it's not by reservation, but it is by invitation, if you're if you're gonna have a wedding, which you have.
Yeah. Well, we 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 actually had something in the ordinance. I I had a I had some approached me to say that his neighbor had an occasional wedding. He wants to start having four or five weddings a year, and it's on one of those bowling alley lots on the river. And he wanted to include certain things on noise and traffic and numbers and so forth. That was a commercial. That was not me having a party at my house. But it's it's not a it's not a regular event, it's that thing, but you did that. You wanted to have a thing. So I had certainly private a part of it, that you have private party. Every week, that's another story.
Yeah.
But I mean, we want we want to develop.
Do you want me to look at that and maybe try to word it to, or put it more commercialized and not like a family event or?
But that's a great idea.
I believe that. That's all money. That are not. Yet, we just want to make sure that you live in the event for five times a year. And and it's something more.
I'll I'll come up with something. I'll I'll keep it in red so y'all can look at it next week.
And you actually had it under temporary sales for like the the firework sales. It was under section eighty six dash six one five. For temporary displays and sales is what it was under the old ordinance. If you wanted to separate that portion out.
We still have a wayside scene, I wanted to totally throw that out there.
It's a you can put a line for it.
You need to put that back down. Flash, last one, that was like fourteen days, was the next one.
What else do you have?
Um, really quick, um, our comprehensive plan, which is now, of course, adopted. A couple of things in that that since we're looking at making changes. Um, it states the cluster subdivision provisions to ensure conservation of environmental features and appropriate site analysis. Are submitted in application. Uh, it also states use in reference to future land use maps as a guide for emerging growth in targeted areas. To maintain rural character and promote social and economic resilience. Um, the and site analysis when a subdivision's similar process is the key to identifying and ensuring. That important conservation features are protected. Um, so research it a little bit with that. And a lot of the information, it's not gonna really cost them a lot extra to do because the mapping is out there online. For them to get a lot of this information. Um, but it's, uh, one of the things is we require the applicant to prepare a contact map of the immediate area. And a detail of the existing, uh, resources, the site analysis map of the property. Um, also, uh, conceptual site visit with applicants, planning staff, planning commission members early in the process. To get a feel for what is actually on the site. Um, required applicant to submit an inexpensive conceptual plan as a first layout document. Before he prepares, um, detailed layout and design. Uh, this is also gonna help with, um, improving buffers and open space connections. And less than the developmental impact the the neighborhood around there with, um, the opposed form. Uh, a good time, contact map, it can be based on data, um, from aerial photos, topo maps. FEMA flood plain map, tax map, wetland map. Um, and this will also minimize the developer's costs. Because if he gets in there and he finds that there's gonna be some issues. He knows there's areas he's not gonna be able to touch. So an existing resources site analysis map is gonna provide a greater amount of essential information. And this is typically required, but it's a document and it gives us a large variety of site. So with that, I think we do the policy coverage, not in this our our cluster, but in all. Not not all of the subdivisions, but our major subdivisions and our big developments. Um, and of course, our clusters. Not our not our minor, not our single lot, but our our large development.
Just to clarify, just marketing to everybody else. Um, so we talked about doing the contact first. Recognizing upfront that there was a thing at the contact that was warranted addition. To support this just one, and then maybe others.
There will, there will be others.
And 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 to your point, we don't want to drag this out first here. But I think there are some major things we can make sure we put to the timeline. Um, and I think so just very close on that. I may still incorporate the things we talked about tonight. What's your reason?
Now, well, this is just a note that I had taken. But, uh, we want the comprehensive plan, the update, the cluster, and user reference, future land use, and the site analysis. That is in our our new comprehensive plan. Thank you. And if y'all are good with that, I will, um, put some coverage in there.
What what's we have for our July?
We have no public hearing. Uh, actually, Chris Dino will be, um, handling that one. I'll be on vacation. Uh, if I have internet, I will, um, it would be available that way. Last year I did not, and I can only put it to page through my telephone. Uh, but I will have everything ready for you for your final review and.
Do we want to continue the discussion then? If you're a light lover. I'll keep that with you. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's right around.
We we can have that for you and, uh. Uh, I know we can't put anything on, um, on the other board supervisors. But we're gonna look into the eighteen and see if that's gonna be agreeable with everybody. And I would.
Thank you. You got the business?